Okay, I'll call this meeting of the City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Mayor Tempere Popescu.
Here.
Councilman Daley, have we heard from him? Absent.
I know I'm covering for him tomorrow at IBDA, so I don't know if he's out of town.
Here he is.
Welcome.
We'll count him, count him present. Mayor Rigsby.
Here.
And Councilman Leonard is absent. There is a quorum.
Thank you. We'll begin with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilman Daley.
Life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
Mr. Mayor, there's one correction on item number two. It's a presentation by Tuckfield and Associates relating to water and sewer rate study.
Okay, thank you. Now is the time for the public to participate on any items not on the agenda. You want to make general comments, this is your chance. So come forward. Seeing no one, we'll move to our agenda. Item number one, financial reports. We have a presentation of our audit by our auditing firm.
Your Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, city staff, I want to thank all the hard work and effort by Diana and Sonia. Audit for our first year went fairly smooth, hopefully on their end too. What we have for you is my part of the presentation. Responsibilities, and there is a new opinion letter this year, and it's called unmodified now, not unqualified, so I'll share that. The city's responsibilities are to present the financial, present the city's financial position and results of operations fairly, and in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. Your responsibility is to adopt sound accounting policies, provide reasonable accounting estimates, and establish, maintain internal controls, and protect, and prevent, and detect fraud. Our responsibilities are to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. Examine on a test basis, test basis evidence supporting amounts and disclosures. We assess the accounting principles used, estimates made by management, and we evaluate the overall financial statement presentation. We review the city's internal control policies, and we test those procedures, and then we express an opinion on the city's financial statements. And our opinion this year is unmodified. Financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. They're consistently, the principles are applied consistent from one year to the next. The estimates in the statements, which would be like depreciation and some items like that, are reasonable. And the disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements. And you guys submit for the annual award, so you have a lot of extra items in there, and then there's pretty extensive disclosure checklists which we go through, so make sure everything is in there. Other key points, we had no disagreements with management. We discovered no errors or irregularities. We had no significant accounting issues arise. There were no material weaknesses. We did have a small comment letter which we provided, and then there were no compliance issues identified. I think that's it. Any questions for me?
You mentioned a comment letter. What was that about?
I think Jarb has a copy of that. That's part of the package, so, just ideas for improvements, a way to improve certain items. Nothing significant, but...
So if you were to give the city's financial statements and condition a letter grade from elementary school, what would it be?
A being the highest.
Pardon me?
A.
Works for me, thank you.
A plus.
Then I have a presentation that will cover the actual numbers in the financial statements. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So we prepare what's called a comprehensive annual financial report, which includes an introductory section. You'll see a transmittal letter. Annually, we apply for a certificate of achievement of excellence for financial reporting. And we have received that, that certificate as well. We have received it for the 2012 year. Once we're done with this, we'll submit it for that certificate as well. And then you'll see our principal officers in our org chart. We have a financial section that covers the auditor's report. We have the management and discussion analysis that covers kind of, gives you highlights of significant changes and, you know, financial transactions that occur, differences, comparisons to prior year. And then you have what's called the basic financial statements, which will include the government-wide financial statements. And then you have your statement of net assets and your statement of activities. Then we have what's called the fund financial statements, which are basically reporting the accounting on a modified accrual basis for the city. And then we have the notes to the financial statement which give additional detail to the financial statements and supporting the numbers in the financial statement. We have required supplementary information, and then we have additional supplementary information. We have a statistical section that gives a 10-year trend on statistics. Basically, it could be financial trends, basically on the financial statements, revenue trends, which include property taxes, major, major revenues, which sales tax is one of them. And then we have what's called our debt capacity, which shows our capacity in debt, and then we have some demographics and operating information as well. So those are the sections to the financial statements. We present the city as a whole, which includes our general fund, our enterprise funds, and our fiduciary funds. And then we have, we used to present the RE development agency, but since the RE development agency has been dissolved by the state, we now present it as a successor agency, and it's one of our fiduciary funds, and we, it's called a private purpose fund, trust fund. This is our financial statements. Basically, this is our, this is a new term as well. This net position is a new term that came down this year. So we have our activities for our governmental fund, and then our business-type activities, which include our water sewer, our Loma Linda connected communities. So basically, we ended the year, we actually added about, close to a million dollars in, into our, increased our net position this year, and you'll see it in the next slide. But basically, we do have, basically, what is it, 111 million in net position total citywide.
On that slide, can you help me understand when we see a, under business type unrestricted, a loss of 9 million? Help me understand what that means.
That's, basically, most of our investments are in, in net assets. Our capital assets are our big, basically, our big holding as far as the enterprise fund. We have a lot invested in capital assets. So when you compare your assets to your liabilities, some, whatever's left over could be, it's your fund balance basically, or your, your net position now, they call it. And that could be a negative number because you owe more to...
So our liabilities are higher than our assets?
No, our assets are higher, but basically, our liabilities, well, you are correct, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay.
And that could be...
Ah, now it makes sense. Now it makes sense, okay.
Sorry. So when Gatsby 34 came, came along, we had to present a different format in accounting, and this statement of activity and change in net position kind of looks at your operations as far as you take your expenditures, and then you, you identify your program, specific revenues, and revenues that cover those expenditures. So it kind of shows you the total cost of those services compared to the actual program revenues. So those will be your first two line items there, your governmental and your business-type activity, which you see there. Then you take your general revenues with, which are your property taxes, and add those into, property taxes, general like sales tax, so, and add those into the equation as far as coming up with your total net position. When you compare it to last year in this slide, you'll see that last year we had this extraordinary item, which was associated with the dissolution of the RE development agency, so...
And why the radical difference in business-type activities between '12 and '13? I mean, that's, that's a $17 million difference.
We had a major contribution to the Water Enterprise Fund, which is the arsenic treatment plant that was contributed to the city by Lockheed Martin to cover, to, to remove arsenic from the, is it arsenic or chlori?
That facility.
Yeah.
That was built by Lockheed Martin, and that was completely given to the city, so it became an asset.
Correct.
He says it's positive.
Yeah.
That, that is good, negative. For governmental activities, you have a loss of 9 million, you had a gain. Negative means good.
In this calculation, yeah, because you're comparing it, yeah, because you're comparing it to your expenses, and then you're taking your program revenues, and so your positive is actually more expensive than more, you have more expenses than revenues to cover it, and negative actually means you have more to cover your expenses.
I guess when we say a negative is a positive, that's why I got a C in accounting in college.
I think this presentation is a little hard to understand, but even if you look at the full detail in the financial statements.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. You know, I think what sums it up is the fact that we got the letter of achievement and excellence. And my question was, how does that play in with our dealings with DOF? I mean, does that give us a little more credibility? I mean, the fact that we won an award for accounting, so that ought to have some standing with DOF, that hey, we're being accurate and truthful, right?
I wish it did, but DOF is DOF. So, and here we just, general fund, we're just looking at the general fund here, and we're just basically looking at our fund balance and classifications, and we're comparing them to last year and just kind of looking at some of the changes. But if you look, we have unspendable or non-spendable, which basically are prepaid and inventories. Then we have some restricted, which for us, they're mainly grants. We have committed, which is our rainy day fund that we've basically set aside and committed to, to hold, and can only be used by council authority. And then we have our assigned, which includes some equipment replacements. We have general equipment replacements of 1.2 million, and then we have some specific fire equipment replacements in there as well. And then we have our unassigned here as well. But if you compare our total fund balance, we increased over the years, and then we do a percentage of our annual expenditures. We went from 71 to 79 percent of our annual expenditures that we are covering. Are there any questions? And here we just show the change in our total fund balance. We look at our expenditures, our revenues and our expenditures, and other sources of financing, and just to, and to see our results and see how we came up with our new fund balance. And so like I said before, we added close to a million in our general fund balance over the 2012, '13 fiscal year. And then here is where we see our business-type activities. We're looking at the, just the overall operations, and we're focusing on the end result basically for our net change in position by our water acquisition fund, our water enterprise fund, our sewer capital, and the Loma Linda connected communities. And here is where we kind of focus and see that we're actually ending up with a negative fund balance. The Water Enterprise is, is a little deceptive because of that huge contribution we had, but it is actually in a deficit operating position as well, so at this point. And, and just again, comparing it to prior years, you'll see that we, last year, because of the dissolution of the RDA, we had a huge extraordinary item in the water acquisition fund. Here we have the successor agency, basically comparing our assets to liability. It is now, like I said, private purpose trust fund. It's presented in a slightly different format than what you'll see for the regular financial statements. It's a fiduciary fund, and you'll see the net position. You'll see that our assets are lower than our liabilities, so we have a negative net position. And basically, most of our liabilities here are obligations that have been recognized by DOF, which the bulk of it is our bond indebtedness that went to the successor agency. And then our assets are receivables, and one of those receivables is from the city for the Loma Linda connected communities.
In relationship to liabilities, approximately, if I'm reading that correctly, we decrease it by just under a million, 1.7 million a year or so. So we pay about 1.7 million dollars of our debt per year.
Yes.
Which means that if we took out no bonds, we would be debt-free in about 30 years.
Okay.
All right.
And then this just shows the, the operations of the successor agency. We get our additions from the funding that we receive from DOF. Well, the San Bernardino County through what we submit as our ROPS, and they, they approve, and they approve the disbursements. And then the deductions are the payments we make on those obligations. We do sometimes, and one of them, we, we, we are programming where we're balancing out the debt service. So here you'll see, like, we have an increase of $700,000 in net position, but that is a programmed amount that we're setting aside to, to make the next debt service payment, and to even it out for the distributions from the ROPS, which has been authorized by DOF. And that's the end of my presentation. That's our cafer, and I want to thank all departments for participating and their assistance in getting things done and booked in a timely manner to be able to get the auditors out, and I want to thank the new audit firm for, for all their hard work, and especially want to thank Sonia for all her hard work. Without her, this would be a terrible task.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions further?
No questions, just a general comment. It is rather remarkable, even with the soft economy, our revenues only went up by about $150,000, $130,000 a year, but yet our fund balance went up by almost a million. And I guess only Loma Linda could do that, but I think that's a reflection of very good sound management by Jarb and the rest of his staff. A lot of people are sacrificing and working hard, and we were successful enough in being able to provide all the services the city could provide. I think, not to toot our own horn, but if other cities followed our model, our, our whole inland empire would be in much better shape. It can, it can be shown that you can live within your means. It's just a matter of applying the right ethic, and I think our city of Loma Linda is definitely doing that. So we want to thank Jarb and his staff, because without their hard work, this couldn't have been done. So, thank you.
Good job on your report. Even though I'm still struggling with how liabilities are a good thing, I, if we got an A from the auditor, then I just, some things I can accept on faith. But thank you for all your good work.
You're welcome.
And just a side note, this year we changed auditing firms, correct?
Correct.
And it's nice to see we're consistent with our grade, and so that also is very telling.
And as previously mentioned, for the 2000, year ending 2012, we did receive the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And of note, that's the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. And the plaque will be going to Diana, so we congratulate you on that, and we look forward to getting the same for this year. So thank you for your, for your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Sonia.
Yes.
Too bad they don't have a Nobel Prize. Okay, item number two, presentation by Tuckfield and Associates relating to our water and sewer rate study.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have Clayton Tuckfield with Tuckfield and Associates. He helped me with the water and sewer rate study, and we'll like to present it to you. And after this, we can go with the, with our attorney, go follow with Prop 218 for our rate increase. Clayton, please.
Thank you and good evening. I'm pleased to be able to make this presentation before members of City Council. Tonight, I'd like to present the findings and results of the water and wastewater rate study that we conducted for the city. There are a number of topics I'd like to discuss tonight regarding, like, the key assumptions that we used in the study, some of the current issues that are facing the water and sewer funds, as well as how we develop the water and wastewater funds going forward, as well as developing the rates. I'll present those in slides, show you what the impact to some of the single-family residential bills might be, and ultimately show you what those bills are compared to some of your neighboring agencies. In order to prepare the financial plans, we have to make assumptions regarding customer growth and water consumption. The point to make on this slide is essentially that we're following the 2010 urban water management plan that was prepared for the city. So essentially incorporating that into the financial plans, we're still on track to be able to meet your target goals of per capita water consumption in 2015 and 2020. We've also applied some inflation assumptions to O M categories, operation, and maintenance expense categories, and this results in an overall expense increase of just under 4% a year. And for our capital projects, the inflation factor we're applying to those is about 3.5% a year, following the E and R index. Now, in making our forward-looking financial plans, we want to establish reserve targets. How much money should we keep on hand in our water fund? How much in the sewer fund, and in our capital funds? So we're targeting about 180 days of operation and maintenance expense. So essentially, whatever that expense is on an annual basis, 50% of that is an amount we want to keep in cash for that fund. For our capital reserve, essentially, whatever we're going to spend on an average annual basis, that's about the amount we want to keep on hand. We also want to establish a replacement transfer target. This is money we're going to send out of the water fund and sewer fund to a capital fund, and the intent of that is to pay for system... And the intent of that is to pay for system replacements on an ongoing basis. The city repairs water lines, makes sewer line repairs. Those things that occur on an annual basis, we want to fund that out of the rates. So we have an ongoing cash flow stream to make those improvements. And lastly, interest earnings rate, we've assumed a quarter percent on your interest earnings. That's the current life rate. We realize that's probably going to go up in the future, but for now, we want it to be conservative in our approach. So that's the current interest earnings rate, which is actually quite low. Okay, for the water enterprise fund. In conducting this study, we noted several things. We think the water fund reserves could be increased. Right now you have about 1.6 million dollars in cash in the water fund. That probably should be, if we're going to keep our reserve target at 180 days, that would be 2.4 million. Now, the reason for that is that the credit rating agencies like to see about 180 days, given what's happened in the past few years to some other cities. Having a little more cash balance give you a better credit rating and keep your bond investable grade. The water acquisition fund currently has about 1.2 million dollars, but that's restricted. It can only be used for capacity increasing improvement projects. So we can't use that towards funding operation and maintenance expense. So that money is just going to sit there until we identify projects. We're going to establish a water fund capital reserve about, it looks like about total of 800,000. 400 of that is the annual capital spending. And then about another 400 as emergency capital reserve we want to keep on hand should there be any natural disasters we want to recover from. I also reviewed the 2013, 14 budget for the water fund and noted that you have variable rate bonds that were issued in 1995. Since they're variable rate, they're going to be interest rate sensitive. And currently rates are about as low as they're going to go. So I basically discussed that with Jarb and with the city's financial director that I want to keep an eye on that to see where rates might go and how that would apply to the interest payments you'll make on those bonds. As I mentioned, about 400,000 annual capital spending is related to the water system. And also the, the city is currently not paying for water service. This is kind of common among various cities throughout the area here. But the current legal thinking is that under Prop 218, there is no free service and that includes municipalities. So they discussed this with Jarb as well. And the city is going to start contributing to the, paying for their water service. Okay, at this point then, combining all the assumptions and the information I just presented here, we developed a forward-looking financial plan. So the idea is that we're going to increase rates to pay for our O and M expense and our other financial obligations. Now, the issue to note is where we are with reserves. So the blue column here represents our targeted O and M reserve. The yellow represents how much we want to keep as a capital reserve. And the red line is where we're at and where we're going. So the first year, as I mentioned, we had about 1.6 million dollars in cash. So we're about half of where we want to be. So over the next 10 years, we're going to raise the water rates such that we cover the operation and maintenance expense, we put money back into our reserves and be able to fund our capital improvements. So the intent is by the 10th year, we're meeting those obligations.
Quick question?
Yes.
The only way to achieve that target is through increasing rates? You can never transfer money from the general fund into it?
Well, these are enterprise funds. So the idea is that they're self-supporting. So you want to establish rates that self-support all the obligations of the fund.
I see.
Thank you.
And in addition, this is not including the law that came out that the city had to reduce the water consumption by 10% by 2015 and 20% by 2020, which is seven more years from now. That's mean that we have reduced in revenue, but our overheads still stay the same. And this is same goal with the sewer rate is happen to be function of the water consumption.
Okay.
It's a goal.
No, what happened is we, we keep track of how much water we pump from the ground. And we, they use five-year average for that consumption. And from that data that we have, we have to reduce that by. Then proportion.
It's, it's per capita, is how they look at it.
Yes, yes.
I, I have a question. I don't know if this is, this is the right time, but we installed new water meters. And has that not increased our revenue enough to cause this increase without a rate?
For the first year, yes. For the first year, and eventually in my house, seeing my wife seeing the water bill, she said before, you can't, you can't take a long shower. Eventually we got.
But, but then are we seeing a reduction in use to meet our goal for the reduction?
That, that's our goal, yes.
But, but if we're, if we're projecting that we need a rate increase to get the amount of money that we need to build our reserves, then we're guessing that we're having a net reduction in revenue, which means we're projecting a reduction in utilization?
Well, what we're doing essentially here is following the 2010 urban water management plan. So if we follow those projections of customers and water volumes, we're going to get the per capita reductions that we're looking for. Now, there's no guarantee that's going to happen, but we are planning for it.
It's our mandated state reductions. That's what we're hoping.
That's what you're hoping to get. And we're on track for that. And I have incorporated that in here. So this does include that reduction in per capita water use. So that's why the rating, the revenue increases need to be a little bit more than just inflationary.
Did you calculate the reduction in per capita use from the pump volume or from the measured delivered volume?
It's the pumped volume. Yes. And that's why, that way you're not subject to the meter readings, you're subject to the actual pumping.
But in the past, we were reading from the meter far less than we pumped because our meters were spinning slowly because they were old. So we're seeing an increase in, in revenue, but not an increase in pump volume. I'm trying to figure out if the, the projections for revenue are based on actual revenues that we're reading from the meters or from the pump?
No, it's, it's from the meters. That's, that's how we send bills out. Goes and read the meter, calculate the bill and mail it out.
Conversion to the new meters? So there's more potential revenue to be realized when everybody has the new meter?
Yes.
And where are we at in the, in converting from the old to the new? What percent of the city? Two-thirds are converted? And we estimate the.
But right now, based on.
Here?
Yeah, based on the history, I'm sorry. Based on the, the city.
Municipal water district, we as a, as a regional, we did the 2010 urban water management plan that required by the state to update this every five years. And with that report, we, we were hoping that by 2015 and by 2020, we were, we would reduce the irrigation uses by 2% annually and, and 1% for, for the residential uses. So to be able to meet that goal.
See, I think we're missing something else too, is that we haven't been paying as a municipality. So is this an attempt to balance out what we're going to start paying?
Let me ask you another question. I think a couple of slides up, you indicated that we have variable rates on our bonds from '95.
Yes.
If, if interest rates are at their low ebb right now, which is I think what you also said, wouldn't it now be the time to convert those to fixed rate bonds to avoid future rate increases?
I did, I did mention that Jarb and the city's finance director, I, I believe Diana was going to contact the city's financial advisor to see if the, what the.
Is that part of your, the?
What I did was.
You made that recommendation in your report then?
Well, that she contacted financial advisor, that's correct. Okay, let's go on to what the actual rates look like. This is intended to show you a comparison between what the existing rates are and what they will look like going forward. So this is something you might see in the Prop 218 notice. On the left-hand side in the shaded column, that's the existing charges. That's the bimonthly fixed charge. And then at the bottom, you'll see the bimonthly variable rates. So just as an example, if the single family customer had a three-quarter inch meter, they're currently paying $24.29 every two months. That will increase to $25.38, that's a dollar nine. Down below, when you see the volume rates, the first 10 units, a dollar 15. That'll increase to a dollar 20 or about 5 cents per 100 cubic feet there. Now, I realize these are numbers, so what I did was is prepare you some bills to look at. The column represents the current average single-family residential customer. So I calculated that the average on an annual basis is 4,400 cubic feet every two months is how much they use. So running that through the rate schedule, you get that column shown there just above 100. That's the 108 dollars and 31 cents actually. So with the increase, that's the red line, that's the top of that red line. You get that small increase there. And then it escalates as we move forward over time for the next 10 years to hit those targets that I showed you on that, the other slide. Now, comparing that average bill with your neighbors, the red column is the current average single-family bill, 108 dollars and 31 cents. With the increase, which we hope will be this April 1st, that bill will increase to 113 dollars and 18 cents, an increase of 4 dollars and 87 cents every two months. So that's about 2 dollars and 40 cents a month. Now, comparing that with everybody else, it looks like you're in the lower half. So I think the increase is reasonable compared to your neighbors. Okay, let's move on to wastewater enterprise. I also did review of the sewer fund. We have some other issues here that probably should be noted. The sewer fund reserves are depleted. There are no, there is no cash essentially in the sewer fund. And in fact, the sewer fund owes about 357,000 to other city funds. There's about $7,000 in the capital fund right now. So what we need to do is reestablish those reserves as well as pay back the money we borrowed to other city funds. Additionally, a review of the budget showed the, the City of San Bernardino contract treatment service expense was not being budgeted appropriately. The result of that discussion with city staff was that it, the fund had the appearance that you were collecting 500,000 dollars more in revenue than you were actually receiving. So in essence then, a balanced budget would show that you're actually 500,000 dollars deficit.
No, what happened is, is because the sewer treatment plant is at the City of San Bernardino. So we have to pay this, pay them every month for the service, for them to treat the sewer. Correct. But what happened, we, we short on collecting from the resident to pay the City of San Bernardino. And, and for the, the 357,000 shortage, when they do one project, we have us, we have to line the sewer on Redlands Boulevard, it's, it's cost 300,000 dollars. So it's, every time we do a project, it's going, you know, it's spending itself.
It's really just a budgeting issue. And so because of that, there was a built-in 500,000 dollar deficit annually, which we're going to cure. So that with the about annual spending of about 200,000 gets you about a 700,000 dollar deficit that's kind of built in right now, which we're going to try to fix. I also noted capital spending is about 250,000 a year on system replacement. And likewise, we had in water, the city's not currently paying for sewer service, which they will now begin paying on. Okay, this is a picture of how the sewer fund looks like. The blue column is the same, the operating target. The yellow is the capital target and the red line is where we are and where we're going. So the first year, as I mentioned, we have a 500,000 dollar deficit. We owe 350,000 to another fund. So we start off with a million dollars deficit position. So we're going to raise rates as we move forward over the next 10 years. And so we eventually meet those targeted goals about 10 years from now. Now, the point to make on this slide is essentially that between now and 2022, you're carrying that deficit, meaning that you need to borrow from other city funds to be able to carry it until we can start paying back and build our reserves by the time we get out there. Okay. Here's proposed rates and charges for sewer. The shaded is the existing charge. The others are going forward. So this would be something we'll put in the Prop 218 notice. Since they're in a volume charge for residential, the charge shown here is the monthly charge. So for residential customers, they pay 8.67 cents a month. That's going to increase to 9.75 cents this April. That's an increase of a dollar eight per month. So comparing that with your neighbors, I'm sorry, let's look at the, how we're going to escalate those bills. Likewise, the columns represent where you are now. The red line is where we are and where we're going with the increases. So the, the rate of increase is a little more than the water size. So I guess by five years from now, you'll be paying more like 17 dollars a month. And by the time we get out 10 years, it'll be like more like 26, 27 dollars a month. Now comparing that to what your neighbors are paying, that last slide was for the city only. This slide includes the San Bernardino treatment expenses. So the red column here is where you're paying right now. That's the combination of the 8.67 cents and the treatment expense of 18.50 from City of San Bernardino, or a total bill of 27.17 cents per month. That will increase to 28.25 cents or a dollar eight per month. And comparing that, even with the increase, you're still in the lower half compared to your neighbors. So I think you're still within reason on your sewer rates here. Well, we can only adopt for five. So I've prepared a financial plan such that it looks at 10 years, but we're only going to adopt for five years. That's correct.
We're no longer on TV.
Yes, Councilman, under Proposition 218, before we can change the rates, we have to go through this study process, which we're completing now. The next step is to send out a notice to every resident of the city who receives sewer and water service or property owners. And that notice will include the proposed changes, the basis for the changes and all the information that we can generate that would be useful, as well as contact information typically where they can get additional information. After 45 days, there would be a public hearing. And at that public hearing, anybody who wishes to contest the increase can submit a written protest. Those protests will be counted at the end of the hearing. And if the protests succeed, 50% of the persons using the service, then the rate increase would be prevented from going forward.
I'll simplify, I'll simplify it. I'll simplify it. We want to add money to our bank accounts, so we're going to increase the rates. Oh, exactly, I think, I think so too.
Prop 218 notices are legal notices, so they're typically written by staff and then reviewed for legality and then they are mailed out. That's correct.
They go out usually with billing.
They are a separate mailing.
Well, they can go with billing or separately, but.
What happened was we, five years ago, we did the study. But we only increased it for three years for a very, very small amount. And that's why we in trouble because we didn't, we didn't project it long enough. That's why this, this time we do it for 10 years, so that we make sure that we eventually recover. But yes, every five years. By, by do is every five, by, by do projection for 10 years, it's not going to be a big jump. Because every time my wife see the bill, she keep complaining. So, so I have to do it slowly and, and project it up, not, not a quick jump. So I have to do it slowly and project it up, not a quick jump.
Is it just appealing that you heard that the explanation?
Yes.
Is sufficient a robust, your wife?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. That's why, that's why we prefer, that's why we prefer table with this. And at the end, when you look at this graph, we're only showing a dollar eight.
And are we going to share that graph? Because I think that helps create contrast.
But then people at Redlands will complain that, why are we doing this?
You have to remember, Redlands pays their streets with this money.
No, we can't do this, but we can do this one.
You didn't read the news? They raise their water rates to pay for their streets.
Well, under Prop 218, I don't think they're allowed to do that unless there were loans that they were paying back.
They did it anyway.
This is.
I don't know. When you look at the 10-year projection, though, we're talking, you're doubling, you're doubling it. You're doubling the amount of what you're paying now in 10 years.
But that'll be reviewed after five years.
That's correct.
It'll have to be.
So we actually are only looking at a five-year projection.
The other thing is, this thing shows that we clear the deficit and we take off like a jet after that, because at that point, we can, we can lower our rates again if it's gone too far.
Yeah. That happens in the history of government.
I agree with you. But if I would have done a five-year plan and we tried to hit those targets, it would just be very steep.
On sewer, we are far, we're farther under than we are now.
Still have to go through the whole process anyway, so I mean, there's really no point in us commenting on it now, so.
Is there an action?
No. No, right now, we're presenting it to you, and then we'll send out a notice hopefully next week. How soon can we do this? I can't trouble you.
Well, we'll need to discuss with Pam, because we need the, there's a number of days we need to be able for it to be effective, and then for the notices to go out and the mailing to go out. So we kind of have to back into the actual time when we send in the, send the notice out.
Does Prop 218 mandate the formula for the increases?
No.
No.
So then we have some input on that at some point. You said it doesn't require an action, it just goes, the notices go out. Don't we have to adopt this recommendation?
Yes, we have to come back after forty-five days after we send out a notice.
The notices basically are.
Yes. It provides the information, and then the public hearing takes place forty-five days, at least forty-five days after the notice is mailed.
Fifty or 51% of all the affected users have to protest against.
It's a protest vote. As long as no more than 50% protest, it is approved.
In other words, without an extremely organized opposition.
That's what I just said. So if you get 50% of your users protest, then it doesn't go, right? That's what I just said.
Yeah, solvency is my idea.
In case you didn't recognize, I set this up such that the rates would begin on April 1st, so we do have some time to go through the Prop 218 process.
Well, I think it's, it is wise that we follow these prudent policies that ensures we have adequate reserves. We have water breaks and sewer issues on a regular basis, which is part of any city. And I think that also explains why it's important to have a general fund reserve. So if we don't have enough money in some of these things, we could tap into it. Hopefully, we don't want to do that. So obviously, we're trying to move in a direction in which we build up the reserves to ensure that we can maintain our present system. So as far as try to figure out a way to cut the cost for the residents, I think we'll have to really reassess that as we get throughout the years. If there's a ways to maybe increase the impact fees for new development, so we'll offset future increases, that's something that we may want to consider. But I don't know if how much of that is dictated by state legislation or not. Is that set amount that they have to pay, or could we actually, we have some discrepancy of increasing those?
The development impact fee, you can use that only for expansion of the system. You cannot use it for repair of the system.
I see. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, we, I mean, Loma Linda sits on an aquifer, and you kind of gave us the regional benchmarks. How does this region compare with other parts of the state in terms of water and sewer rates?
Well, your average monthly consumption would be 20 units. Obviously, out here in the, it's a little bit warmer climate, use a little bit more, whereas coastal is going to be used a little bit less.
But in terms of the rates?
Oh, in terms of the actual dollar amounts? I think they're reasonable, yes.
So they compare well with other communities?
Yes, correct. Yes. Yeah, and you got, you use groundwater here, so that helps out.
And, I mean, I'm not here to write the document, but I do think that's an important point to make. And if I'm a citizen and I read this thing, that's something I want to read, is a benchmark of how we compare. And if we can't share the benchmarks of our neighbors, then at least make the statement that our rates are favorable compared with others in the region.
So can we include that table?
We can include any information that would be helpful to the citizens.
Then, yes. I want to include that Orange County and San Diego is.
No, let's keep it local to the region right here.
Thank you, Colleen.
Yes, thank you. Okay, item number three, is there some news on this item? Are we going to have a public hearing?
We've had access to the property, done some inspections, working on a action plan with the property owner to move forward on the remediation. So we'd like to continue the item through the January 15th meeting.
I make a motion, we continue it.
Well, I think we have our usual pattern of saying, we've noticed a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, we can continue the public hearing at another time. But I think I need to open it for a hearing, right? So before we make the motion, I'm going to open this appeal, a planning commission decision to declare that a public nuisance exists to public comment. So come forward. If anyone would like to speak, you'll have another opportunity, because it's being continued. Anyone can speak now but can't later, come forward. I see no one, so I'll close the public hearing. And we go to the motion.
Same motion.
I'll second, but I'd like a little more clarification. We extended by a month with an update as to what was resolved. Can you give us a little bit of information as to which items are corrected that would lead us to put together some sort of action plan moving forward?
Up until now, we haven't had access to the property to do full inspection on the interior of the buildings and whatever remediation was done. We've been able to get that access and do the inspections, get engineering reports. The five, the fire marshal do an inspection and get his report. And now we're developing a remediation plan, kind of a priority list of, these are the things that need to be done, one, two, three. And then we'll work down that list, and on the 15th, we'll give you an update on what we've hit on that list and what the schedule is to complete that process.
And the staff is comfortable that this plan would help achieve the ultimate outcome of actually bringing the property in compliance in a reasonable amount of time?
It's, yes. It's probably the least intrusive process that we can do to get it done and still respect the property owner's rights and not be overly aggressive in the city's ability to remediate.
And is the, the changes or the improvements that you have seen indicative, indicative of the fact that it appears as if the property owner is working more diligently towards addressing the issues?
The property owner is being cooperative and working with us to get to resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
At the risk of sounding skeptical, the material that we were provided in the packet includes a letter from a citizen that points out that this has been a process that's been, and a problem that's been ongoing for years and years and years and years. And what you just described in terms of identifying priorities with deadlines has also occurred even within this year, correct?
We did declare the, declare a nuisance and give deadlines to remediate the nuisance, hence the appeal on that. So I guess the other, the other option is, if we don't want to continue and continue with the nuisance hearing, then it would be a hearing to see where we're at on that and what the steps are.
And I guess, just to make the point, we have deadlines of July 22, 2013, August 26 of 2013, September 30 of 2013, November 4 of 2013. And we're still talking about extending it further. And I guess what I'm wondering is, if we haven't seen substantial progress on this by January's city council meeting, then what are the options we're looking at?
Well, the first, the deadlines that you're reading off are the deadlines that are being appealed.
I understand.
Of the hearing. If we have not seen progress to your satisfaction, then we can continue with the appeal hearing and follow through whether to reaffirm the nuisance or not, and then to follow with forced abatement. That would entail the city getting abatement warrants, incurring the expense for us to do the abatement, and then assessing the property for that cost of abatement, with at some point that lien being paid off if the property is ever sold or refinanced.
Mr. Bolovich, I just wanted to address some of the concerns of the citizen who wrote the letter. And it was my understanding in previous discussion, previous council meetings, I have no problem with us being very strict and enforcing the things we say we're going to enforce. But from what I understand, and the person who authored the letter makes reference back to some things back from the 90s, I think we discussed that there was not appropriate follow-through by the city on those items back then. Is that, was that correct?
Back in, back in the 90s, there was, as far as I can tell, moderate conformance to the requests at the time. You know, we're looking at 30 years of additional maintenance issues, additional deterioration, degradation. So, you know, back in the 90s, I looked pretty good, too. So, you know, it's one of those things, maybe it was okay, and maybe it's deteriorated since then, and that's why we're revisiting it. And the purpose to keep coming back to council is to make sure that the property owner and the council are both aware that there's progress expected and that there is a resolution out on the horizon. This is not something that we want to just table and walk away from.
Yeah, and I guess that's my point. I guess that we, I think we're, we're pretty unified up here on this council, that we want to see action and that we're not in any way deferring our intent to see a follow-through here. We're just allowing that process to complete if it's capable.
That is what staff and the property owner are looking at as well, is bringing this to completion without a forced abatement.
And the public nuisance action was July 17, correct?
That is correct.
But we have, we have not yet confirmed it.
The action was taken by the planning commission. It would be up to the council to deal with the appeal and confirm the nuisance, the public nuisance, yes.
So technically, we have not rendered judgment on it.
I understand. So we're a little slow on the draw here, too, but I understand where it's being appealed.
So, okay, we have a motion and a second to, to continue this to a date certain or just a date future?
I think we're, we're looking in the staff report, we're looking at our presentation in January again, correct?
That's correct.
And I would just like to say, for the record, you know, I put a lot of faith into the staff who is daily working with the property owner. And I think if we weren't getting that same, we weren't getting that cooperation, and maybe we're headed down that same path, I believe staff would probably indicate that to us, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't be in this position. I think we would take more of a swift action on it. I can only hope that we will get that report. If somehow it starts breaking down and that's not, the cooperation's not continuing, then the next council meeting, we may get a different perspective from staff, and they say, okay, we need to move forward with this. And I think, because not being, not dealing with it every day, it's hard for us to really know.
Sure. But again, this has been going on for a long time. Define success for me in this. What are the expectations for January?
The expectation.
In other words, if we do small increments, we can be doing this dance for another year. So what are we expecting?
The expectation for January, at least from staff's side, is, is that we come up with a schedule that matches more or less what you have in front of you, and that there is remediation along the vegetation and flammable vegetative matter that's on the property, that we can get the weed, the weed abatement and.
So the weed, weed abatement's completed?
That would be our goal by January. And at least we can give you an update on how far down that path we'll be able to do.
And then the electrical and roofing and all that stuff will hold off on?
Not hold off on, but those, they take time to get a contractor. They're more cost-intensive.
So can we say there'll be a plan then, a clear plan?
There will be, there will be a plan and dates to perform and to complete, yes.
Okay. Okay, that works.
Just a general comment, that I commend the staff in working with the property owner, despite the fact that it has taken a long time. But I think that, I remember not too long ago, sitting in the same seats over there, and this particular property owner did have issues with the council, and it became quite disruptive. And it had a lot to do with how staff and the council was dealing with it versus the property owner. So I think it's a change of policy, to be honest with you, in which, even though we strive to ensure that our city's clean and well-maintained, when we do have issues, we will make every effort to resolve the issue in a, in a methodical but yet fair manner. And I really think the staff and the property owner is working that manner, and I really appreciate that, so, thank you.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing not, it's approved. Item number four is a public hearing on a Holiday Inn Express.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant, Mr. Harold Patel, is requesting approval of an 85-room, four-story, 53,000-square-foot Holiday Inn Express at a vacant site on the north side of Redlands Boulevard, just off of Richardson. It's, the site is located next to the Hardley-Davidson, the Dutch Motel and the truck repair facility on Richardson. And the property is located in the East Valley Corridor, specific plan, general commercial zone, which permits hotels. And it's a very unique-shaped lot. It will include a 26-foot-wide driveway off of Redlands Boulevard, and will line up with the lights that are currently there. The driveway complies with the fire department's standards for access, and will include a secondary driveway right there for emergency vehicles only. And there's, there's already an easement there for such purposes. And this is the first-floor plan, again, 85 rooms, single bedroom suites, exercise room, two meeting rooms. room, two meeting rooms. Excuse me, it's been changed to one meeting room, and room for continental breakfasts, a pool, and a lounge area. A landscape detention basin will be located towards the rear of the property. And this is what the hotel will hopefully look like. The building will be 50 feet in height, and this particular zone doesn't have a height limit, however, relative to the location of the building relative to the freeway, to the other buildings. Hardley-Davidson, the building won't look out of place, plus it's set back very far on the property, closer towards freeway than it is towards Redlands Boulevard. And these are the different facades of the building. And it'll include a large port of cashera in front for dropping off gas, luggage, checking in. And it includes a large number of trees and does comply with the landscape standards of the East Valley Corridor Specific Plan. Mitigation measures have been incorporated into the project to ensure that the project complies with Measure V, and that the level of service C is maintained through year 2035, including the applicant contributing towards the cost of necessary study area improvements on a fair share and pro rata basis. The initial study was prepared by Lillburn. All of the potential impacts associated with the project and identified by the initial study can be mitigated to a level, below a level of significance. All the mitigation measures were incorporated as conditions of approval. Therefore, the project can be approved with a mitigated negative declaration in accordance with the requirements of CEQA. At the planning commission meeting, the commission has some issues that they would like the applicant, they wanted the applicant to meet with staff to go over. Some of those issues that they raised were to modify this driveway entrance to be more of a curved serpentine-style entrance, provide more landscaping along the west facade, relocate this parking to the west side, and then put more landscaping there, and provide solar screen on the west facade. The applicant met with staff, including the fire department, and regarding the three, the meandering driveway approach, the relocation of these parking spaces to the west property line, and the additional landscaping there, it would be very difficult and costly for the applicant to change this site layout based on those relatively small changes due to the unique shape of the lot. We tried different ways of modifying this, and due to the fire access here, you can't make the turn if you have the parking along the west side or a meandering driveway here. You couldn't make the turn this way. So it was considered, they weren't requirements, they just asked the applicant to meet with staff to go over them, and unfortunately, they can't be done. However, the applicant did change the windows that they were proposing along the west facade, and he's upgraded those windows to be even more energy-efficient than they were previously. The ones he was proposing before, energy-efficient, complied with Title 24. These, the ones he proposed are better, so, and more energy-efficient. As proposed, the project complies with the development standards of the East Valley Corridor Specific Plan, General Commercial Zone. And once the hotel is constructed and, and is in operation, it's anticipated that the city would benefit from approximately $300,000 in transit occupancy tax, so, just that I throw that out. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation, sir. We have to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is also here to answer any questions you may have.
I was just curious, what was the planning commission's thought process behind that serpentine driveway? What were they looking for?
Just some visual interest. They thought this was just too straight. I mean, we tried.
No, I wondered if there was, if there was like a specific reason.
They wanted something that looked a little grander than what they were proposing, so--
They can't do one of those ramps that come up and then, like at the airport?
We did consider it serpentine.
I'm just curious, the building is quite a bit away from the freeway. Were not, were they not able to bring it close to the freeway because they do not own the property? Is that why?
Let me go back to that. Actually, they own all of this. But there may be future development along the rear portion of the lot.
Such as what?
Such as another commercial development.
Which means that, how would they access to that with, how would they get to that property?
Without getting too ahead of myself-- I will let Conrad address this.
Okay.
That's, if you can see on the drawing, that's kind of a, it looks like an F shape laying on its side. Those fingers are part of that lot. So the piece against the freeway really at this point is, is unbuildable. However, we're discussing with the developer, the city owns the well site on the corner and the piece inside the finger of the F, so we're talking about some property swaps. If that becomes the case, then we have a usable lot for the city and also a usable lot for the developer, who then is looking at a second hospitality-type product on that site.
Okay. And that would, that would have access from Richardson?
They would, they would have access off of Richardson and a shared, shared driveway, you know, essentially the same driveway off of Redlands Boulevard.
That makes sense, it's just I'm a little concerned putting a hotel in the middle of a field with open space before it and behind it. It just looks a little awkward. But if it's part of a grander plan, I can see where it actually helps, but--
In front of the hotel, because that's a long, narrow finger coming off Redlands, that's where the Dutch motel is, there's the redevelopment property on the corner, so it's kind of locked in the way it sits there. It becomes a really difficult lot to work with as it sits now.
Okay.
The property adjacent to the driveway that says vacant commercial building, that's owned by a different property owner?
That's correct. That's Nader's, the used auto dealer there. So it's the driveway--
It's not vacant now.
It's no longer vacant, it's Nader's, and then the Dutch motel, and then the vacant property on the corner. That's a redevelopment property.
But there is vacant land west of that, is there not?
East, yes, east, east.
No, west.
To the west of, on the other side of the driveway, is vacant property owned by Quaid, and then that's their, then that long, narrow lot is Quaid property, and then the internal road for the auto center.
It's a good-looking project. I'm kind of excited about it. We've needed a good hotel in the city of Loma Linda for a while. This is, this looks good.
They have worked closely with staff on this project. I took it out of this presentation, but we did have prototypes in other cities, and this by far was the better of the, of the prototypes. Some of them were just desert-specific, you know, look, Persian designs and Greek columns.
It's a good-looking project. I'm very excited.
I wanted to know a couple of things. We've, I've been now on the council for five years, and I've had three motels or hotels in front of us, and none of them ever got built. So my question is, how sure are we that the funding is available for the property owner?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I do have the applicant here. Would you like to speak to him?
I would love to, thank you.
This is Mr. Haral Patel, he's the owner.
Thank you, good evening.
Hi.
To address financing, well, the first step in obtaining financing is to ensure that you have city council approval and that you have a firm project. So, once we have approval, hopefully tonight, we're going to be working with our partners to obtain financing in the upcoming months, hopefully in the next 30 to 45 days.
So you're fairly comfortable that with approval from city council tonight, that's a significant step forward in trying to get finances needed?
Absolutely.
The other question I had in reference to Holiday Inn Express, how sure are we that it's actually going to be a naname brand and not something else?
1,000%. We have a franchise agreement already set with Holiday Inn Express.
And there's nothing that could prevent you from changing that once a hotel gets approved? In other words--
We, we could change it at a substantial cost to us, however, it wouldn't be in our best interest to do so, and we have no plans to do so.
And the reason I ask is because often we're told certain name brands, and ultimately, that's not what ends up happening. So I'm just wondering whether we as a city can actually put in the approval that it has to be by the name, Mr. Attorney?
Well, an approval of this nature runs with the land, so it's not appropriate to tie it to a particular brand.
Okay, so then, in other words, we can't really force them to name a particular name, then?
No.
Okay.
Perhaps Mr. Patel can explain his previous history in developing other properties in the area, so that, you know, this isn't, this isn't his first rodeo.
Absolutely. So my family has been in Beaumont since 86, and we started off with a small 16-unit motel there in Beaumont, eventually grew to four properties that we have now. If you travel towards Pond Springs, just after you pass Highland Springs Avenue, you'll see a four-story Hampton Inn hotel, that's also ours. We did that, we developed that about six years ago. So we would have developed other properties sooner, but larger session. And that's probably the biggest reason why the other hotels that have come before the city council in the past never came to fruition.
Well, I, you know, one of the things that I looked into was just development in general, and I know that when the housing boom busted, hotels really got hit hard. Really, really, really hard. And a lot of banks were, you know, were upside, not upside down, but they found properties going upside down. In fact, I think that particular property at one time was owned by someone who was trying to build a hotel, and it never came to fruition. In reference to the business model, what is it that you felt a hotel in that location would bring to our community that other folks didn't see before, perhaps, and take advantage of? In other words, we do have hotels in other cities nearby, so what would be the advantage of having this particular hotel in our city? I guess that's a question.
Well, the way I see it, you have a lot of people coming to this area primarily to get healthcare right now. They have families visiting from out of town, and it would be in the city's best interest, and especially the hospital's best interest, to give them an option that's closer than having to go to, say, San Bernardino or Redlands or even Ontario. Because currently, the city of Loma Linda does not have a branded hotel. Many people specifically want to stay at a branded hotel like a Hampton Inn, a Holiday Inn Express, because there's a level of service that they become accustomed to. But that's not the only clients that we're going after or that are going to be using our hotel. There's a lot of business people that are coming in and out of the community, and they may want to stay within the city of Loma Linda. City of Loma Linda has a very specific brand image of its own, and to deprive them of the opportunity to stay within the city and experience that, I think, speaks volumes.
Yeah, and there's nothing about it, I know that we've had a lot of work done at the airport, and sometimes Boeing sends lots of engineers down, and there are no places for them to stay, and they actually end up staying in Ontario, even though they have to work in San Bernardino. So what is the final question? What is the expected cost of building this particular project?
Simply the hard construction cost or the total project cost?
Just the hard construction.
Hard construction cost would be ballpark in between five and $6 million.
All right, thank you.
What is your projected timetable on this project?
Well, if everything goes smoothly and we don't incur any hiccups during construction, construction will typically take about 14 months to complete. Should we, best-case scenario, are able to start that in February or March, then we'd be looking at sometime spring of 2015 to be open.
And this isn't necessarily a relevant question, but I'm curious, when, when your previous property is a Hampton Inn, how do you, what kind of, what goes into the decision as to whether make this, pursue a Holiday Inn or Hampton Inn or one of the other options?
Sure. Well, if you take a step back, we're a franchisee, so what we do is we go to the franchisor and say, we would like to develop your brand hotel. But before we do that, we have to look at the area in which we want to develop a hotel. So in this case, we're looking at Loma Linda. We take a look at our brands that are already existing and brands that are in construction. So for example, if we are looking to do a limited-service-type hotel, which is what a Hampton or Holiday Inn Express is, our preference may be Hampton, but there's one already being constructed in San Bernardino right now. So we would not be able to do a Hampton if we even wanted to do a Hampton. However, Holiday Inn Express is a very good brand that we are very comfortable with developing and investing significant sum of money into. There is no Holiday Inn Express hotel from Ontario all the way to Beaumont, in between those cities, on the entire I-10 corridor. And so for those reasons, Holiday Inn Express, we felt was the best-suited brand for this area right now.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And then I think, it wasn't necessarily mentioned, but some of us already know that you're going to have some conference facilities and stuff here at this particular location.
Yes, we will have approximately an 80-room conference facility, and if we are allowed to by Holiday Inn Express, then we will have an additional 12-to-16-person boardroom on the second floor.
And the $300,000 projected occupancy tax, that was what, per year?
Per year.
And that was based on occupancy rate of how much?
To tell you the truth, I don't know who came up exactly with the 300--
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent, okay.
It's $97 per room, per night, on average, $120, 80% occupancy.
There you go.
Do you anticipate being able to rent 80%, not on a regular basis?
Well, our, our internal conservative projections are at about 68%. So, and that's what the average is right now of the similar properties in the area.
Okay, thank you.
I think though, based on, based on our city and the quality of our city, they could actually draw out from some of the other surrounding cities.
That's what we're hoping.
Might be higher than your 68%.
It's, it's directly west of the Staples and Costco. Yeah, and next to that will be a Homewood Suites that's already under construction as well. We will try our hardest with your support, tonight.
On the most serious note, there was no way for you to make the hotel bigger and extend it all the way down to the freeway? I know it's kind of a--
So, I can speak, this, this parcel is by far one of the most oddest and irregular-shaped parcels I've ever seen in my life, and I'll outline it for you, kind of, so that you really get kind of an impression of what it is here. Comes down like that, goes up again, around, back this way, comes down, over and across.
And that's what you own?
Correct. And so that's, that's, we're working with some very irregular constraints to begin with, and then we're given a prototype building from Holiday Inn Express that says, build this, but modify just enough to make it work with your site. And then we also take into consideration our surroundings that we're building in, in the city, and the facade that the planning department and commission would like. So this is, this is the, the shape and site of the building that we felt would most optimize land. We pretty much said that this is going to be wasted space and is just going to be used as a driveway coming in, and pretty much nothing else for all intents and purposes right now. But later on, we may, and we're hoping, to be able to develop this in conjunction with some possible adjacent parcels here.
So it gives you the option of doing something bigger and better at the other end?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and to speak to that, too, an 85, 85-room-sized hotel is actually a fairly decent-sized, limited-service hotel. Given that we're not already in the market, and we're taking a new risk, I guess, into this market, we kind of wanted to take a conservative approach, given that we had room to expand later.
Okay, then I think it's time for, if there are no further questions, a public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing, if anyone would like to speak on this project. No takers, I'll close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the council? We have two items for motion.
I'd like to move the project. Do we do them, you want them separately?
Usually can do them together.
On these two?
You can do that together, as long as the negative declaration is number one on the list, and is approved at the same time, that's fine.
All right, my motion is to move both items, the mitigated negative declaration as item number one, and number two, the precise plan of design, number thirteen dash zero sixty-six, as presented here to council.
Okay, any other discussion? Is there any opposition? I hear none, so it's approved? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is item five, Council Bill O-dash-two thousand thirteen dash zero four, the second reading, roll call vote, amending our building code.
Can I make a motion that we read?
Public hearing.
Well, I think we need to have a public hearing and a present, well, we can dispense with the presentation, but we need to have the public hearing, please.
We've had the public hearing, you don't want to hear from me.
Well, it's, did we have the public hearing previously?
We, I thought we had the public hearing already.
But it was noticed again as a public hearing, so.
I have to do it.
I just.
I'm just following the...
Okay.
This is just basically updating our codes, right? I mean, I read through, I can't say I read all of them, but...
Basically, this is a, this is an adoption of the most current building codes relative to the building residential, plumbing, electrical, so that every, every few years, there's a code cycle where the newest materials, newest standards come out. Typically, we adopt the entire package as one unit, and that's what we apply going into the next code here. And we have Ron Esplin, who's our building official, who can address specific issues on this as they come up.
And this is pretty conventional practice across the state?
Yeah, this is, this is a standard...
This isn't going to limit our development or anything, because our codes are becoming so restrictive and difficult to...
This is the California, the California Building Code, and it's just a regular code adoption cycle that keeps us current with current safety and building standards.
Do we have an option?
I don't think so.
Temporarily?
I don't think so.
That's your question? No, we don't have an option. The state requires us to adopt every three years, and that's what we're doing tonight.
Okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted to hear it.
Okay, then let's, let's have a public hearing. Anybody like to talk about this? Nobody's giving up. Close the public hearing. What's your motion?
I move it. I guess I need to say, Council Bill zero dash two zero one three dash zero four. And that motion includes waiving reading, read by title only?
Yes, I meant to say that.
It is entitled, it is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, Adopting and Amending the 2013 Edition of the California Building Code, Including Appendix Chapter One, Appendix Chapter J, the 2013 California Residential Code, 2013 California Green Building Standards Code, 2013 California Electrical Code, 2013 California Plumbing Code, 2013 California Mechanical Code, and the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code, and repealing Chapters fifteen point zero eight, fifteen point ten, fifteen point twelve, fifteen point sixteen, fifteen point twenty, and fifteen point twenty-four of the municipal code. And you may vote.
Yes.
I should have played games and voted for him.
Okay, Dr. Leonard voted not present. Okay, thank you. That, that finished. That, item number six is next, public hearing, Council Bill O-dash-two thousand thirteen dash O-five, the 2013 California Fire Code, second reading and roll call vote. We already had a presentation last time, there's a public hearing again. Do you have any questions of staff? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Come forward, speak ye, speak ye all. No takers, the public hearing is closed. What's the pleasure of the council?
I will move Council Bill O-dash-two thousand thirteen dash zero five, and read by title only.
And dispense with the reading.
Dispense with the reading.
And is there a second?
Second, that?
It is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, Adopting and Amending the 2013 Edition of the California Fire Code, Adopting and Amending the 2012 Edition of the International Fire Code, and repealing Chapter fifteen point twenty-eight of the municipal code." And you may vote. And it passes.
Thank you. Item number seven, another public hearing, my hammer's getting a workout. Council Bill O-dash-two thousand thirteen dash zero six, second reading, roll call vote, adopting 2013 Wooey Interface Code. We had a discussion about this in the past, is there any questions for staff?
Look at that, he sits on a public safety policy committee, and now he's using fire terminology.
Wooey?
Did you teach him that?
Yes, sir.
Well, they changed it, they changed it to E-Woo.
Who did that?
I don't know, it's, I always called it Wooey.
I call it Wooey as well.
Okay, so I will open the public hearing. Would anybody like to comment on the Wooey? Okay, no takers again, close the public hearing. Time for the motion.
I'll move Council Bill O-dash-two thousand thirteen dash zero six.
Dispense with the reading, and by name only. Is there a second?
I second.
It is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, Adopting and Amending the 2012 Edition of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code." You may vote. And it also passes.
Okay, I will open the Housing Authority, call it to order, and we'll have a joint public hearing pertaining to the sale of a property. Madam Clerk?
This is Mr. Mayor and Council. These two items pertain to the two houses that were recently purchased by the Housing Authority through a different process, because the Housing Authority had assumed the assets of the former redevelopment agency, had assumed the housing assets. If you remember, we purchased them for basically the equity that the former owners had in the homes. We have qualified two families as, as low-income families to purchase these homes, and so this is the process now to hold a public hearing regarding the disposition of these two properties. The Housing Authority would adopt the two resolutions to sell to the identified families, and the city council would consent to that sale. And we anticipate the close, if approved, to be after January one. And the Housing Authority would be the one to actually finance the mortgage. We would hold the paper. So the recommendation is then that the Housing Authority approve the two proposed resolutions, and the city council adopt the consenting resolutions.
Okay, are there any questions of staff? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Are large attendants? Any takers on this one? No? No. Okay, close the hearing.
I guess we need to make four different motions?
Just lump them all together, A through B.
I don't know about that.
Well, logically, A and B go together, and C and D.
All right, I'll go ahead and move Loma Linda Housing Authority Bill R-dash-two zero one three dash zero six, along with Council Bill R-dash-two zero one three dash two eight.
Second?
Okay, any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Next?
I'll go ahead and move Loma Linda Housing Authority Bill R-dash-two zero one three dash zero seven, and also Council Bill R-dash-two zero one three dash two nine.
And I'll second that one, also with a comment that this is, I think this is appropriate that we're, we're doing this. We've had discussion about these for a while, and I'm glad to see it actually moving, so.
Okay, any further discussion? Any opposition? There is none, so that's approved as well. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead. We will hereby call it the discussion calendar.
On item, and the change of order regarding...
Item thirteen?
On thirteen, I guess.
Thirteen.
I'm having a hard time understanding what's the amount of the change.
The entire hundred-and-thirty, hundred-and-just thousand, or is it just...
That's how much it was approved, but I'm not sure what the change is.
Good question.
There's a contested change that was not approved.
It's a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars.
That's the amount of the change order?
Yes.
So, is that within...
There's a five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar contingency, right?
Well, this is, this is for engineering, this is for the construction management, not, not the, the construction. That's, that's why I have to come to the city council to make, for you to approve this.
So, is it within the ten percent contingency?
It's not within the contingency.
No, this is for the construction management.
Wow.
So, how are we addressing this increase, then? How are we paying for it?
It will come from Measure I. The money for, for construction management is come from Measure I.
For this particular project, for Stewart Street?
Yes, the city, the city portion is come from Measure I. And then, the construction portion, the hard costs is, is university help pay for it, the city pay for...
I understood that.
...the soft costs is, is the construction management, geotechnical services, and construction survey.
I understand. We're putting in about five-hundred thousand from us.
It's now, it's a little bit more now.
Okay, so it's five-hundred plus one-sixty-three?
Correct.
I follow you. The other question I had was on, I've got to move to the agenda here. The CBG grant that we're putting money towards some of the rehab pavement on Park Cottage in Coloma, I remember you mentioning one time that there was a plan to put in sidewalks along Mead Street. Do you have any timeframe, or any...
We, we end up, don't have enough money for, for Mead Street. We end up spending more money on pavement rehab, and we end up having to transfer some money from Measure I to help cover the project.
Do you have some ideas to when you'll be able to get enough money to put in sidewalks?
Hopefully, maybe next fiscal year, we can get some more money from CBG, but it's getting smaller and smaller every year now.
But, but to put in sidewalks is going to cost you a lot more than fifteen thousand, so.
But there's, there's a lot of trees. The plant's done.
I know, I know.
The cost for, for removing trees, and the hard part is at the corner, the northwest corner of Mountain View and, and Mead Street, is the house that have a retaining, the wall and, and fence, right adjacent to the curb, and it costs a lot of money to relocate.
As I was driving down that street, I realized there's a huge amount of trees that would have to be moved.
Yes, yes. Just the cost for sidewalk is not much, it's only, you know, but, but it's, it's the, the other cost.
And then the last item on the consent agenda, we're putting together a tentative parcel map for the Linda Valley Carics expansion.
No, we're waiving, we're waiving the tentative parcel, we just do the final, for you to approve just the final.
Okay. It has been so long since we approved that project, what's been holding it up? I remember we actually approved it moving forward, but yet they haven't even gone to construction or anything.
They, they were having some problems with their financing to get that together.
Are we getting closer, or?
Apparently, they are making progress on that, and they're, I mean, they're putting the time and money into the extension, so at least it shows that there's some...
All righty, thank you.
Since we're discussing, I have, I have a question about the fire department report, too. Almost ten percent of the activity for November was fire alarm activation. Can you give me some sense for, for what that's about? I mean, are, how many of those are legitimate, and how many of them are just goofy, or, as you call it here, malicious?
Popcorns and microwaves.
None of them are malicious. We, those are pretty rare, where someone is doing something maliciously. It's, again, the healthcare environment and the requirements in a lot of the facilities that happen to be in our community have a pretty high, high level of alarm.
Yeah, you're smiling at me, because I'm from dentistry, and I know where, but I don't, I haven't been out on the lawn for a while, so I don't think we've been setting off our alarms, but...
I haven't seen the dental school for a while. You guys are probably living pretty well.
Well, there's a new bean in town, so it's, no, I'm kidding.
Oftentimes, there's, there's construction, there's, you know, there's, there's legitimately something happening for the system to activate, so it's, it's not malicious. You know, it's a low incidence of it actually being a working fire, but there is something happening in the building. The system's doing what it's supposed to do. There's other activities that are leading to it, in most cases.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think, I think we discussed before, like, sometimes there are cooking accidents and other things, or things that are building up that are going to become a fire at some point, but what was that we talked about?
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are, those scenarios as well, you know, small kitchen, you know, type incidents, cooking type incidents, that if they were to, you know, go unattended, could ultimately result further down the line, but they've been mediated at, at that level. We get some of that as well, so. But, just, I think the, the environment we have, and I don't know that, that really, that's an unusual amount of incidents. There are fire alarm systems out there. If you looked at a law enforcement report, it said how many people, you know, security systems activated, you'd probably see a similar trend. Their system is doing what they were supposed to do for some reason.
And those are automatic activations? Do they require contacting Confire Dispatch and all that, or is it...
Yeah, they're, they're automatic. Generally, they're, they're monitored by a service, and that service has a protocol, too.
Yeah.
I, I will tell you, though, that we definitely have a business-focused philosophy in terms of silencing and getting a system and a business back in, 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 in progress. There's even discussion with, like, the FMO staff. What does that mean to the LUSC organization when the FMO empties, in terms of, how much time does a doctor have to see a patient, and you take twenty minutes out of that? What does that, you know, there's, there's big implications. So, our guys understand that, they take that to heart, and the goal is, hey, we need to, we get in there, investigate, and get the business or owner back in, service as quick as we can.
While, while you have the floor, is the agreement, the new agreement we have with the city of Colton working out well?
Yeah, I think it is. We're certainly watching it closely. There are things that are going very well and making some, some good progress. Some of our staffing has been a little, little bit thin in some of our reductions, so we're watching that, and I think we've agreed that, hey, at the end of the year, we'll look and say... say...
Reassess.
Where did we end up, and was it the exact right move, or is there something in between we should look at, or maybe we did? That's, we hit the sweet spot, so...
Okay. Thank you.
I've seen their engines in our town quite a bit.
Yes, we're trying to get to the point where there's a little more cross going back each way, and that area familiarization with both organizations to our critical infrastructure, our target hazards in our city. Also, some equipment familiarization is happening as well, so there's a lot of things. We are close to a joint training and a joint policy manual. It's been an effort by both labor and management, and huge steps. Those are really the foundational pieces to our people reacting, acting, doing things the same way, and going very well from that perspective.
Okay, there was a motion and a second to approve. Is there any opposition? I don't see any, so the consent calendar's approved. Are there any reports of councilmen?
I was thinking about bringing it up when Jeff was talking here a second ago, but I think it's worth mentioning that our own Phil, Director of our Chamber of Commerce, fell ill not too long ago, and I want to commend all those involved that found him and that got him the medical attention he needed and all that, and it just kind of goes to show that when you're feeling those aches and pains, maybe it's, maybe you should go get them checked, not necessarily put it off. But you guys did a good job.
Also, I recently met the new pastor in our community that also had a very critical incident, and he sought me out and thanked me, and said there was a doctor telling him he was having a stroke and another one a seizure, and our medic said, "No, you're dying." Took control of the scene.
That's the best of the three?
Had to be reassuring.
It was, certainly that incident, it's actually, we should actually review some of the things that happened there. It's, we've done some things over the last couple of years with the EMS system where the hospitals, we have a cardiac system now where with twelve lead results in the field, we can actually start the cath lab team, getting a cath lab up and in place and in motion. So that incident is probably one of the best examples of quick defibrillation in the field, followed up to the hospital and directly up to a cath lab. It's really one of the great results of what's happening in the pre-hospital environment compared to, you know, twenty years ago. We've really come a long way, so we're making a difference.
That incident made quite a positive impression on a lot of people. I've heard about it, so good job, and be sure and pass our commendation along to the crew that actually handled the incident.
We will, and as well as the lifeguard there at Thoreason Center, we do some training with them a couple of times a year for that whole, hey, here's your initial actions, and here's how we interface and pass off to each other, and I think that whole thing paid off there, so...
Good deal. I appreciate the notices that we get from Sandbag, and I know that they've had the typical new off-ramp shut down for a couple of weekends, or is that part of your report then? Oh, well, very good. We need to have officers' reports before councilmen's because Jarb's usually anticipating when I'm gonna ask.
Are you ready, Fumi?
Please.
Okay, this is one of those stats report on our projects and the projects that are going on in town. You, for the first one, you just complete, you just approved the, under consent calendar, the replacement of the pressure-reducing valve. So that was completed, and it's a done deal. Next is the Stewart Street project. This past week, this past two weeks, the contractor have been putting the steel piles along, this is campus, this is George Street looking west, so there's total one-hundred-and-fourteen of them, and they did it within two weeks. And this is the, this is a bridge that go across Stewart Street. So the piles are in, the next phase will be starting probably later on this week, you will see truck coming out from the project site, starting hauling dirt out of the project. And then as they're removing dirt, they will slip a piece of wood or metal through this beam and uses a retaining wall. So they will slide a piece of wood down this I-beam here, and this is the, this white piece of portion right here is styrofoam. So they remove that, and they will slide the metal or plywood, sheet of plywood down, and then they start excavating the dirt out. They would do that at a five-foot increment. And then it will get to the point where, at the deepest point, part which is gonna be approximately fifteen feet deep, they will have to do a tieback, call it tieback, which is a steel rod that penetrate into the ground on both sides of the street, and they will pour concrete so that when the wall is completed, the tieback will hold on to the I-beam and also part of underground, too, so prevent it from tipping over. So the project is coming along well. Our goal, the reason we have to do a change order, councilman, is because there was delay to the project during the, we had to work with Verizon to relocate their transmission line. There's a big transmission Verizon right here, so it took them a little while to relocate. So there was the delay to the project. Our goal is to have this project completed by May, keep my finger crossed if it doesn't rain a lot. And also, we'll have to give the bridge portion to the university by early March, so that they can start working on the landscaping and the tile work, or the granite, I'm not sure what kind of material it is, on the bridge deck itself. So the contractor had to build a approach slab from here to here on both sides, so that the university contractor can get on the deck and working on it. The dirt going to two side, on the west side is going to the stockpile at the end of Campus Street. So you come out here and turn right to the place at the end of Campus Street, the property owned by the university. We can stockpile that for them to use for the next project. The one to the east, it will go to the farm on the Academy Way, so go up Anderson and turn right on Academy. There's a big farmland owned by university. The university would like to spread that dirt and for them to use it for the future project. And the reason for that is the farmland, when you want to build something, it will shrink, so it'll shrink it and subside into those land, so that's why we want to keep the dirt. Next is the pavement rehabilitation at Park Avenue, Cottage, Lilac, Coloma. The project is completed with the pavement. The only thing left is to do striping, and what, on this Park Avenue, what we did was we grind approximately two inches of existing asphalt, and then we overlay with the new asphalt. So today, they went out and raised the sewer manhole, they raised the sewer manhole to meet the new asphalt. So the striping should be done probably this week. In addition to Park Cottage and Lilac, they also did service seal to Poplar Street from the bridge all the way to Redlands Boulevard. And the reason we do service seal because we did grind and overlay on Poplar Street about eight years ago, so it's now to do a service seal, okay? And after they're done, again, later on this week, they will stripe the center line on Poplar Street and the left turn pocket at the end of Poplar and Redlands Boulevard. The project is funded by the CDBG grant, and we have to use part of the Measure I money to help to finish off the job. Also, I didn't mention that this alleyway, alleyway that go behind all this apartment that belongs to the city is in very bad condition, so what we did is we pulverized existing asphalt and compacted in place, as used as a base material, and overlaid it, too. So this area now have a nice brand-new asphalt to the street and to the alleyway, to the back. This project just started this Monday, yesterday. This is to widen Campus Street from Barton Road to the Mona Way, which is the street that come out the new parking structures. What they are doing right now is relocate the water meters, the fire hydrants, and we have to relocate the gas line because the gas line is too shallow, so it's in the work right now. And what we plan to do is we try to take advantage during the next two weeks, during the school close, to get majority of the improvement done during the two weeks. The project will take approximately four weeks, a month, so that's a goal. So it is kind of inconvenient right now with the traffic along Campus Street. Next, we have a, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to comment that there's a little bit of interesting odors coming from that construction project you guys may want to check out.
Interesting what?
Odors.
Odors. Okay, that's good to know.
And working.
As part of the Measure I, we have the sidewalk improvement and sidewalk replacement at various locations, and this is one of the sidewalk project that we, is under construction on Newport. And the reason we do this is we have the post office right here, Newport and Barton Road, we have a bus stop over there, and when people get off the bus, they have no way of walking in this direction, or they have to go across the street to go into the handicap ramps and come around to the south side. So what we did is to put in the sidewalk over here and put in the handicap ramps and off four corners at Redmar and Newport. Also, with this project, they will go around replacing the lifted sidewalk at various locations, remove curb and gutter, a broken curb and gutter at various locations, so this is part of this project. Yes, we trimmed the olive trees, yes. Next, this is the replacement of the water line down on the alleyway between Benton and Bel Air. It was existing six-inch water main, and we replaced it with eight-inch water main between these two apartment complexes, and this is a walkway that go to the street called Exodus. So we add another five hydrants along the way, and this is at the recommendation of our five marshals, so we thought it was a great idea, so we add hydrants there. We put the main in, and we paved the street, this project is completed. Next, at your request, Councilman Daly, the landscape been in bad shape earlier, so what we did was we went out and cleaned a lot of landscaping, and we just planted approximately seven hundred shrubs and trees. You probably don't see it much right now because it's only one gallon to five gallon shrubs, so we planted the bokavia with our pink flowers, we planted the Mexican Buddha Paradise, and there's another plant that have purple flowers, I can't remember the name of it, but anyway, we planted a lot of them in town. You probably gonna see that coming up within a year, so... Yeah, this is, we planted along Beaumont, Mountain View, Barton Road, Lawton, so, again, be patient, it's easier to plant one gallon to five gallon than a bigger one, so, and it's cheaper.
And they actually have a better chance of surviving.
That's why we have to trim it. It's nice flowers, have a pink flowers.
Big thorns.
Yes.
My legs slashed.
Next is becoming, is it winter time right now, so our guys don't have to mow the lawn every week. We usually mow the park every week, so now our mission is to go around and change the street name sign, any sign that have, you see, sometimes you see people put a sticker on the sign, and so we remove them and replace a new one. So we have been, the city crew been replaced a lot of street name sign. I tend to pick new interchange. There's had been a lot of progress on the interchange itself, the pavement, this is the off-ramp, the westbound off-ramp, just west of Anderson, we're now at the full width now. So they have planned to close the freeway again, the off-ramp again, on January the third and the fourth, and when it's open, it's completed. So we have the full width of Anderson eastbound off-ramp by first week of January, okay? Now, the second phase is not gonna start until maybe July or August because they still have to go out to bid and acquire some additional. There's some on the north side of freeway and a portion of Anderson, south of Redlands Boulevard, so there's some work on Redlands and Anderson.
Remind me again, Jarb, once that gets started, what's the expected timeframe for completion for that?
For the second phase, it's probably not about a year and a half.
In other words, two, two and a half?
Yes, yes. There's a lot more work on the north side of freeway than the south side of freeway. Next, we have the SBX project. If you've been driving around, the station in Loma Linda look pretty good. The parking right, parking lot at the southwest corner, Redlands and Anderson is pretty much completed. They're working on a suite light right now. So this is the schedule from them, and this is from them, not from me. So they are purchasing all the buses. The construction is scheduled to be completed by February of next year, which is just a couple of months away. This is vehicle maintenance facility, it's under construction, it's scheduled to be completed in July of 2014, and the bus is gonna be start operation in April of 2014. So this is their schedule, and it's been coming along. And that's in my report. Thank you.
One other question is how, is there a schedule for Public Works to clean up the on-ramps and off-ramps at Mountain View? Is that on schedule, or is that on...
No, sir, as a matter of fact, I just talked to Caltrans two weeks ago. If you drive down during the rain, I think it was two or three weeks ago, there was heavy rain, and there's a section of the freeway, I-ten freeway, the curb is missing. So the water been pouring down, flooded a portion the way we put the rocks down.
Yeah.
So they closed off the freeway off-ramp, so I parked my car and walked and met with them and asked them to please finish it up, so that we can come back and remove the, put the rock back, and it's their responsibility to clean up the channel, so I asked them to clean the channel for us, but they didn't give me the schedule, but it's been asked.
And how frequently, under ordinary circumstances, how frequently do they maintain?
Maybe once a year, not very often.
Not Caltrans, Loma Linda Public, I thought that was our responsibility.
We responsible for the slope.
Yeah, for the slope.
But not the channel.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And how frequently do they go clean up?
Maybe once every three or four months, because we have to ask them permission to get in, to get on the right of way.
Have to ask Caltrans permission to get on that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we just adopt the highway and have permanent access?
But then we be liable for a lot of things, so I don't want to take their liabilities.
Okay. Is there anything else, ports of officers? If not, then the City Council's adjourned, and we will finish off the Housing Authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda? It's up to you, Dick. Okay, no comments. We already did our public hearings, the demands register is there for your pleasure.
I'll move the demands register.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved, that meeting. Any reports of officers?
No.
Any member reports? Okay, then we're adjourned. Last is our successor agency meeting. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No.
Would the public like to speak on that item? Hearing nothing, the demands register.
Sorry.
Okay, any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved, and we're adjourned. See you all next time, next year. We'll see you this fiscal year.